All those speaking in order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up is approval of the agenda. A motion to approve the agenda. Been moved and second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those same sign. Uh, moving on to informational items, uh, classified appreciation week.
So, um, I put out a memo to the staff and to you, and I just want to acknowledge them. I think for the record, I am going to read the letter kind of redundant. Um, so it says classified staff as we approach this time of year, I want to take a moment to extend my heartfelt appreciation to each and every one of our classified staff members encompassing a diverse range of roles, including those in transportation, security, secretaries, office assistants, administrative assistants, custodians, nurses, paraprofessionals, business office, curriculum department, migrant services, technology, maintenance and food service. Your dedication, hard work are the bedrock of our community and it's essential to recognize the immense impact you have on our collective success. Throughout the year, I've had the privilege of witnessing your unwavering commitment to excellence. From ensuring the cleanliness and safety of our school facilities to providing invaluable support to our teachers and students. Your contributions have not gone unnoticed. Whether it's preparing nutritious meals, maintaining orderly workspaces, providing safe transportation, offering security, attending to health needs, assisting students in classrooms, managing administrative tasks, supporting curriculum development, serving our migrant community, keeping our techni- technology infrastructure running smoothly, maintaining our facilities or ensuring students are nursed with quality meals, your efforts are truly commendable. It's often said that a school is only as strong as its staff, and I firmly believe that to be true. Your dedication and passion for your work are what make our educational environment such a vibrant and enriching place for all. Thank you for everything you do to make our schools a place where every student can thrive. And so that letter was, um, put out on our social media. We've been doing, um, classified appreciation, um, in each building each morning. So we started the week in the high school and then we went to, um, middle school and we were at Witstran this morning. And so they have a little stadium blanket they're getting as a gift. Uh, two K, um, bakery is providing donuts and Starbucks coffee and we get to celebrate them and thank them for their work. And so it's just, uh, really important to understand that this wheel is not balanced and does not roll if everybody doesn't participate to make that happen. So thank you for allowing me that time and thank you to those classified staff that are listening or anybody in the audience. We surely do appreciate the work.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. I think it's, uh, you know, they do a great job for us and we appreciate, you know, what they do in our schools and, and to keep the, you know, keep everything going. So thank you. All right. Next up is, do we have any board? Thank you. So. Moving on to board comments, hearing from visitors, you may present a concern to the board during the time reserved for the hearing. This is the case, we ask that you prior to the start of the meeting, sign in, noting the topic you intend to address to the board. Come to the microphone here and we'll probably have to move one right blank. Move the microphone over. Okay. Uh, state your name. Do not reflect adversely on political or economic background, character or motives of any individual. Do keep your comments concise, non-emotional and brief. The board is interested in hearing your concerns and your compliments too. It's best to call the superintendent's office a couple of days before the meeting. If this is impossible, you can ask the board president to recognize you during the hearing session. And we'll do, um, uh, board, or addressing the board for three minutes for a total of twenty. First up is Rachel Mercer.
So you know, for, uh, for everyone, uh, let's start the countdown. The timing will, uh, we'll give you ten second countdown. Go beep beep beep. Just keep on talking through that. The second beep is when your time is up.
All right. I'd like to stand. Uh, my name's Rachel Mercer. I'd like to address the board tonight on parliamentary procedure. I understand the Prosser School Board of Directors has not adopted Robert's rules as their standard, which is reasonable. However, it's good to have a bit of background and know the fundamentals. Robert's rules was created by Henry Robert, a former army officer in the eighteen seventies. Mr. Robert found the need for a standard parliamentary procedure after moving to San Francisco and retiring from the military. He volunteered for a variety of organizations and realized that there was no rhyme or reason to establish, reason established for meeting procedures. He also had a goal. San Francisco at this time was very diverse. Different ethnicities and languages were common. He wanted to create a meeting rules that would follow the majority but honor the minority. That spirit should always remain in any good meeting organization. Without the adoption of Robert rules, this meeting style is pretty informal and more dialogue discussion emotions can and should be raised. It's always wise to understand the basic Robert rules and motions. I'd like to go over three motions. One, point of information. This is a motion to request more information. Any board member may interrupt the speaker at any point for this, and it's simply to ask information to clarify what the speaker is saying or related information on the topic. This motion does not need a second. It's a simple request and very helpful in debates. Two, suspend the rules. This is a motion to simply put a pause on related rules or procedures. An example would be suspending the procedures for public commentary. The motion does require a second, but there is no debate as the motion should be clear as to why it's being called. Three, postpone discussion. This is a motion to move discussion of a topic to a specific meaning or further down the agenda. This is different than tabling, as a table motion is usually meant to throw away a motion or assign it to a committee. A table motion must be removed from the table, whereas a postponed discussion can move along at an assigned time or meeting. The president shouldn't be asking for a motion. Since there are no rules for the role of the president in this regard, the president can make motions if they want a motion. They shouldn't be leading the board in that direction. Any director can bring a motion forward. To end, I'd like to voice a concern I have and that I know is shared by many of those who witnessed the last forum meeting. When there's a controversial topic at hand, I encourage all board directors to come to the meeting with prepared arguments or statements. To say little or simply ask questions makes it look as though the issue has already been decided and argued behind closed doors. We want to hear your opinions and your reasonings, especially when there are so many questions raised. Thank you.
Uh, Kimberly Starr.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Starr. I've lived in Prosser for thirty-three years and my husband LJ De Corsi has lived here for forty-five years. I'm a retired Prosser High School Theater Arts teacher and drama club advisor and mother to two and stepmother to two previous Prosser School District students. I'm here to address the school board in support of Agenda Action item number six, which recommends approval of the Mental Health Matters Grant Agreement. This Saturday, March sixteenth, is the ninth anniversary of my son Tom's death by suicide. He was a PHS junior when he took his own life. He wrote in his final missive that he shared his plan with a friend who was also a PHS student. Whether this person did not hear Tom say it or thought he was kidding or did not want to get in trouble, get Tom in trouble, I don't know. But if it's true, Tom verbalized his plans day before, days before his suicide. And had we known it, it would have given us time to step in and get him professional assistance. I do not blame his friend for his death. I do wish the friend had told a trusted adult what Tom said. I'm confident had this friend learned about the signs of suicide ideation and the steps to take when concerned about someone, they would have acted. While it is not the responsibility of students to try to save a friend, it would be lifesaving for them to learn what steps to take when they are entrusted with this kind of information. I know teachers have a lot on their plate and asking them to step in when someone expresses suicidal ideation seems like one more responsibility. However, when someone is trained to see the signs of suicide ideation and what steps to take, they will be able to handle the situations with confidence and caring. As a PHS student, both before and after Tom died, a number of student, students spoke to me about their own or their friends' suicidal ideation. Before Tom died, when in this situation, I typically panicked, did my best to comfort the individual and referred them to the counseling center. After Tom died, I became a suicide prevention advocate and learned to recognize the signs of suicidal ideation and the questions to ask someone about whom I'm concerned. I was able to approach these subjects with a certainty and clear head, gathering as much information as possible and then referring the students to professionals equipped to help them. It is important to normalize talking about suicide ideation while following best practices. This research-based curriculum will teach students and staff that information. I would hope our school board members understand the importance of educating students and staff about this paramount topic. And I'm thankful the agenda recommends approval of the Mental Health Matters Grant Agreement. I have no doubt this investment will save lives. Please let me know how I can assist our district with this initiative. In memory of Tom and in support of all of our students, thank you.
Notes, Camille, is it Klingel?
Yes. Thank you. I promise that I will not speak anywhere close to three minutes. Um, my, my idea is very simple. I, I was a teacher here for approximately thirty years, also raised two children here or out in, in the world. And, um, I was married to a farmer for a long time, so, um, I, I have a little bit of, of understanding of what, what plants need to grow. Something that stuck with me during the week following our meeting, um, what was it, two weeks ago? I went back to my training days as a teacher and I thought, what was that graphic? What was that thing? That we all regarded as we created our lesson plans. And then I thought, what was it? What was it? It was Maslow's hierarchy of needs. And I thought that it, that was a touchstone to us. And, and I know that the needs haven't changed. The faces of the needs have changed and the degree of the needs perhaps. Um, but the principles are still sound. Um, so I revisited Maslow's hierarchy of needs. And, um, it gave me comfort to know that they weren't a hierarchy of wants or wishes. They are a hierarchy of needs. We start with the physiological needs of a person. For example, just simply, um, food, water, shelter, sleep. Next comes safety, security, health. Next comes love and belonging. Next comes self-esteem and then finally self-act- actualization. And I can tell you as a retired first grade teacher and then intermediate elementary teacher and then raising kids all through the years. Um, they need that foundation and they need it every day. If that foundation is compromised in any way, you will not be able to achieve the things that will enable kids to live in the world. Last week, we had the gift of a, a, an educator who has taught in the world, Dominican Republic and Singapore. My desire, our desire for our daughters was to raise them to be citizens of the world. I believe Prosser Schools can be a springboard for success. For children, for, uh, our children to become adults in the world. And just on a simpler note, because I know that, um, I often had to do this in my teaching. Think about a plant, very simple, needs three things, um, food and light and water. If you take one of those away, that plant will die. If we take away the foundation of what students need, they will not thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Camille.
I, I'll be brief. I just wanted to, um, bring to your attention some things, um, that the school district is lacking. Um, I have grown up in the valley my whole life. When I had kids, I made the decision to move to Prosser because it was my understanding that, that Prosser was a very um, solid school district and I wanted that for my kids. But what I've found is very different. Um, I've recently pulled my two oldest students from high school. Um, for a few reasons, one of those reasons is, um, I teach my kids conservative values. And I found that in some classes, they failed simply because they had conservative values. Um, for example, a health class, they were required to refer to a baby as a fetus. They don't believe that, which, uh, you know, everyone can believe whatever they believe, but they should be able to state how they feel as well and not fail a paper or fail a class because of their, their views. Um, another thing is, um, there's no safeguards on the Chromebooks. The kids, um, can look at whatever they want. I have one child that is addicted to pornography now because these Chromebooks don't have any safeguards. Um, there's limited safeguards at school. The kids all know how to get around them. At home, there's no safeguards. Um, and I have another stu- one of my students, um, he's already passed four classes in four weeks on an accelerated program online. When he was in the high school, he failed almost every single class. And he's, I'll tell you, he's gotten ninety-five percent on all of his classes so far online. And in the school district, he failed almost every class. And I'm becoming a teacher myself and I've been taught that you are to teach to every student, not just the students that you like, not just the students that are easy or whatever. And it reflects on the teacher to have students that fail. And he didn't just fail one class, he failed multiple. Now he's got three years, he's a junior now. He's got two and a half years to make up because of all those failed classes. That tells me that there's a lot of work to be done. And I thought that you all should know these issues so that you can possibly work to improve the things that are broken in this school because this is an amazing community with a lot of potential. But there's a lot of things that need to be addressed and fixed. And so, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Amy. Uh, Jim Hopwood.
Yeah, I'm gonna pass.
Okay. Laura Johnson.
I put myself at the bottom. Last time I didn't like that someone else who didn't. Um, I'll sit down because I don't like to stand and I'm super nervous. Uh, so I didn't prepare anything in writing for you guys today. I just had a couple of observations after the last meeting. Um, that Friday I had a therapy appointment because I think mental health is really important. I go to therapy every other week. Uh, and I was talking to her about the school board meeting and my feelings, um, and how frustrating it is for me that it seems that there's always a battle when it comes to being diverse, inclusive, all the stuff I said at the last meeting. Um, and she sees people throughout the valley and she goes, that's how Prosser is. She goes, that's how it's gonna be. And I, it was, so that was really frustrating for me. And it's frustrating me, for me to hear that from people that don't live here. Because they look at Prosser and they're like, oh yeah, I'm not surprised by that. That's horrible. Like, it should not be that way. Like, I love Prosser so much. I do. I have lived here my whole life. I want to continue to live here. I want Prosser to be better. Anytime I come and speak, I hate it. I hate public speaking. It makes me so nervous. But I always think the five minutes that I'm nervous or uncomfortable is nothing compared to the daily struggles of people in this town and in this school district. These kids who every day feel uncomfortable, who every day feel unseen, unheard, unaccepted, bullied maybe. Um, so if I can be uncomfortable for three minutes and express that to you guys, that's fine. I can do it. Um, another thing, like, I have a senior, she's gonna graduate. She doesn't want to stay here, which makes me upset a little bit. But I hear from her and other kids, especially when it comes to this stuff, they're like, Prosser's horrible. Why would I want to stay here? Bunch of racist people, homophobic people, transphobic people. I hear all the time and I'm like, no, Prosser's not like that. It doesn't need to be like that. But the resolution you guys passed at the last meeting shows that's, we're all, we're gonna fight diversity in schools. We're gonna always be against it. Uh, it, I feel like I'm fighting a losing battle constantly. I'm constantly trying to talk about how great Prosser is. I want people to be here. I want people to stay here. I want this to be, I want people to think of Prosser and be like, they're really accepting, open, friendly, loving, kind people. I want, I see that here. I know that it's here. I just, I want that to be what stands out. Not, I don't, I, I can't fully express my frustration at hearing people say, oh, I'm not surprised by any of that. Like, we end up in the news for stuff sometimes and I just, like, I cringe, guys. It's, I, I don't know the answer. I don't know how to make it better. I don't know how to make you understand. I also, I have ten seconds left, so I'll leave that point, but just let's try and be better. Let's, let's not always fight against being diverse and inclusive and kind and nice and decent.
Thank you, Laura. Is there anybody online? Anybody else? Close that portion. Thank you. And then we'll move on to student representative report. Yushimi.
Okay, so, um, for ASB, we're, we're doing certified letter, uh, appreciation letters for the, uh, staff that aren't teachers. Um, during lunch, we're signing those. And then I'm personally working on having a club fair for the homeless school. Or, no, sorry, not the homeless school, the eighth graders. So I'm working with Mr. Denny and Mr. Gregor, our ASB advisor, and I'm doing that as a student board representative and as a executive bits manager for ASB. So we're doing that Friday, month thirty-first at the, uh, um, oxygen here at the high school. So it should be pretty fun. And we're bringing all the eighth graders and we're having all the, um, ASB clubs. So that's good. And band and choir, I think, are having a stand. So hopefully we'll get more in the music department and then for music, we have a band competition coming up in Kennewick, at Kennewick High School, I think, on the twentieth. And then we have our mass band festival at Grandview on the twenty-fifth. And then Lilac Parade in May. And I also want to thank all of you for speaking today.
Thank you, Yushimi. Noah?
I was gonna cover Caitlin's part, but she never sent me what she was gonna say, so I'm gonna skip that and go to my part. Um, I don't have much. Um, I just did want to say that I got to go to one of the dress rehearsals for the play. And I have to say, it looks amazing. Um, I recommend everyone go. Opening night is tomorrow. Um, doors open at six-thirty. The show starts at seven. Um, and that will run tomorrow, Friday and Saturday. Um, I did hear over the past couple of weeks from teachers, um, specifically on the south side of the building, as well as students, that the rooms are getting extremely hot. Um, and teachers are asking, when can we get the chillers turned on? It was, uh, seventy-eight in a fifth period classroom that I was in today. Um, one of my teachers noted that they've seen kind of a, uh, heat fatigue in their students, um, as the day drags on, that the students seem to get more tired. Um, I'm sure that also has something to do with daylight savings, but, um, the heat as well. Um, and, uh, that's all I have for now. And, uh, again, thank you, everyone who spoke.
Thank you, Noah. Um, on the heat thing, um, I want you to know, I will, it's in my notes and we'll get the message out to the building staff and we'll work with them.
I have another thing. Uh, was the menstruation products free?
Yes. Okay. Everything's up in the middle school. All, um, female restrooms are up and running and usable and free.
Noah, what's the play?
Woo.
They're different endings.
Okay, not supposed to say anything. No, um, there, there's doing, no. That was what they were originally gonna do. They're gonna do the same ending every night, but it'll be revolving. Uh, there'll be multiple in the same night.
Thank you, Noah. Thank you, Yushimi. Okay, moving on to discussion items. Um, first up is school building reports. Start with Prosser High School. Mr. Bailey.
Better be careful. They're gonna fire you if they promote you.
And the microphone problem.
Oh, yeah.
Three minutes.
Three minutes, okay.
Did I mess you up, Blake?
Well, just, I'm gonna need to steal your.
Time, Mr. Bailey.
You can just find me. I actually wrote it down so that I wouldn't go over today.
Okay.
Um, thank you for you guys going over, uh, non-athletic activities at the high school. Uh, positive I wanted to start with, uh, is our math club. I don't know if that has been touched on before, but our math club participants, uh, they participated in Washington, this is a long title, Washington State Mathematics Council Regional High School Mathematics Competition. That team consisted of Stanley Chan, Dakota Silkot, Elizabeth Norris, Lars McCord, Austin Candanoza, Aiden Rublato, Clara Wykoff, Iris Deng and Carson Coquendorfer. And they brought home hardware. So they worked hard, uh, brought home a first place finish, a second place finish, third place finish and an alternate finish just between those nine students uh, in various competitions throughout the day. Uh, one more huge shout out, thank you to Kim Hoy as the advisor for that. She's done a great job of promoting math, um, literacy and, and math skills in our students and, and that will continue to grow, I think. Um, we are working on a number of things, but just two that I'll focus on. Uh, you guys should know, um, we've been working on scheduling for twenty-four, twenty-five and receiving lots of help in tutoring and instruction as we go. I'm learning that process uh, as, as we go and it's getting better all the time. Um, I'm also working on a Hall of Heroes that has been discussed at probably, uh, multiple times in the last three years, but it's, it's, uh, coming very close and, and will be, will come to fruition this summer. Um, I also wanted to say I learned this today. So Mr. Funk has done a great job with his attendance campaign, uh, March Madness campaign. And I learned something today. Did you know? I didn't know this, but did you know that on any given day, uh, we have two percent of our student body that are out of school participating in school-related activities? Uh, it can be both good and bad, but two percent on any given day is out of school participating in school activities. I view that as a good thing, um, because I know that a lot of kids just want to be involved in, in whatever. That could include band and, uh, and math competitions. That can also include athletics. Um, our athletics program just started spring sports and, uh, a lot of kids participate. Uh, we're excited about where all of this is headed and we're excited about our play. Excited with, uh, everything that Yushimi is doing to, to promote these clubs and activities down to the middle school. And we're always looking for ways to incorporate the eighth graders. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Brian. Ooh, you're right on, buddy. Good. I have my timer, everybody. I told them three minutes.
Next up, uh, is the department reports. We're gonna start with the migrant department. That would be Eric. The rest? Are you on?
Eric, are you on? See on?
I don't see him.
Hey, three minutes back, everybody.
Maybe we can, can postpone that. If he comes on, then we'll take time. Moving on to action, the first action item is, uh, action item number one, DECA to International Career Development Conference.
Good evening. Um, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Kelly Gilbertson. I am the business and marketing teacher here at PHS. Um, with me today is Juliette and we are asking permission to travel to Anaheim at the end of April so that her and her partner, who couldn't be here tonight, um, can compete in the School Based Enterprise.
Can you tell them about what School Based Enterprise is?
School Based Enterprise is a fifty-page paper that we had to work on, um, to compete for state, to make it a national. It's based off of our student store, our DECA student store, which is where we sell like all the snacks and stuff during lunch. So we just had to do a process procedure of different, different prompts, which they included financial, financial prompts, operations, pricing, promotion, selling, human resources and products and services of the student store.
And the success of the student store will fund the two students, um, trip fully. And if they need any extra CTE, we'll backfill and CTE will pay for it, Kelly.
Have you ever been to Anaheim?
I have not.
She's not even been on the plane.
I haven't been. You'll be fine.
Um, how long is the trip?
It's April twenty-sixth, uh, through May first. Yes. Um, so when we get there on Sunday, these guys will actually be attending an academy where they're gonna meet kids from other schools and explore what they do with their student store. And then Monday and Tuesday, they will be competing. And their topic this year is the product service management is what their presentation will be over.
You guys see, so the materials in the packet were really interesting. Will you get to see other schools compete and different, the other, there's all You guys see, so the materials in the packet were really interesting. Will you get to see other schools compete and different, the other, there's a lot of other contests that will be happening, is that right?
Yes.
I think it's great you guys get to go and I wish you lots of luck.
Thank you.
What uh, what, what's your takeaway from starting up a business, good and the bad?
The, the good is, the good is getting the experience, I guess, of having that retail experience, but the bad would be customer service, I guess. Not always fun. It's, it's fun when they're nice, but yeah.
Thanks for being on.
Sounds like a great opportunity.
Other questions? You're gonna get to go to Disney.
Yes, on Saturday.
Universal too, right?
Yes, yes.
I make, I would move that we approve travel out of state for DECA to the International Career Development Conference.
Got the second, so it's been moved and seconded to approve the out-of-state travel for DECA to the International Career Development Conference. All those in favor, hold on a second. Yoshimi, what do you think? It's gonna take me a minute, I told you, it's gonna, I'm gonna get it there eventually. Um, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
It's gonna be interesting to see if them and if they cross the board.
So maybe uh you can help, you can come back and let us know how you did.
Yes.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to action item number two, the consultant service agreement for Tri-City Thunder.
Hello, everybody.
Good, how about yourself?
Here to talk about our consultant agreement for our track events this year. Um, we have a timing guy who times all of our meets for us, so we have a meet on, in April, we have another meet in May. And then I'm hoping our conference will be able to cover the last meet for us, so that doesn't come out of our athletic budget. Um, and the sole purpose of this is for, for our event to run very smoothly without having individual people time each event. Um, it's worked well in the past and I would like to continue that. System a lot and then someone to run it as well. It would be a lot. Um, this, this gentleman's made a career out of it in the spring because he makes a lot of money doing it for three A schools, four A schools, um, state events. So it's, if you can get into it and learn how the technology works, it's pretty cool.
As a person who's timed many track meets, there is a lot of human error in that process. It's tough, it's tough if you're hand-typed.
Uh, I just had one question. Why, why would there be a difference in cost between the, a lead meet in May and a, the Prosser invite in April?
My guess is the amount of teams. I can ver, I can verify that, but my guess is we have about twenty-five to thirty teams for the invite and only about three teams for a league one.
Okay, so, thank you. Any other questions for Jackson?
Move that we approve the consultant service agreement for the Tri-City Thunder.
Been moved and saying to approve the consultant service agreement of Tri-City Thunder. Yoshimi? Noah? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Um, thank you, Jackson.
Thank you.
Uh, consultant service agreement with La Ziba Events LLC?
I don't know how to say that either, so I hope you got it right. Um, I am here just to offer my support for our junior class, um, and their proposal to hold the high school prom at La Za, La Ziba Events Center uh in Kyiv.
Can you just tell them our conversation?
I can, yes. I met with our prom uh planning committee, uh, that consists of our junior class and um I think there were five students in the room along with the advisor. Um, we had many discussions about keeping that dance here in our local community, local area. Uh, we just had winter ball, which was quite the success um at the old PHS managers' secondary gym. Um, kids loved it, kids loved everything about it from my understanding. And so I asked them to put together a presentation for me on why they felt they needed to go elsewhere. Uh, they did a great job with the presentation. I asked them a lot of questions, uh, offered some opinions of my own and keeping things here in the community. Uh, their overwhelming desire was, yes, we, we like our community, we want to hold events in our community, but prom is a big event and prom needs to be special and grand. And we really wanna go to this other place, Mr. Bailey, uh, which is in line with our past practice. We actually have done that in the past, um, allowing students to go to other locations. Last year we had it also, we also had it in uh Benton City. Uh, the location or the venue, not the location, was a little bit small. I wasn't very happy with that one. This one is much larger and will accommodate us better, parking is much better. Um, there were a number of areas under consideration, but this is the one that, that uh worked best for our students and the size of the dance, so. Um, my hope that you will accept the proposal.
What's uh, what, what is available locally that would, is there anything in Prosser that would accommodate?
For the size, if you're looking at indoor, there's not much. Um, the places that we were looking at relatively closed were in Benton City or out towards Grandview and Sunnyside. Due to the construction, the back way, we absolutely ruled that out. Um, if you're looking for outside venues, there are a few more, but we're very late in the process to um, to be able to secure that location. Um, and then you're talking about gym space and, and our old PHS or here at PHS. I don't know that. I, I have heard a little bit about it, but I feel like I can check. Uh, I think they always have snack food, don't they? I believe they will have snack food. I can't promise you that, but I believe they will.
Uh, pretty common fee or process.
It's act, this actually, this fee is quite low. Um, the owner of La Ziba is of Prosser Grad and reduced the fee for us. This is almost half of what she normally charges. Junior, junior class pays for this and they pay for that with the sales of tickets as well as what they've raised for prom.
Any other question? We'll make a motion to can approve the consultant service agreement, La Ziba, was, La Ziba Events LLC, the prom venue. Yoshimi? Noah? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Um, moving on to number four, consult service agreement with Kendra Hilbert.
Uh, so this is an arrangement that our special director, Nikki Swanson, um, was able to find Kendra to help us with IEPs. Um, we have a substitute filling in for um, one of our teachers who passed away for the remainder of the year, but she not qualified, she doesn't have a special endorsement to write the IEPs. We, for about a month, we had a couple of teachers splitting the job from other buildings to help cover writing the IEPs. This actually costs us less because we don't have to pay the benefits and all. This is less expensive than paying our own teachers to write them and less stressful for them, cuz they're not begging to write extra IEPs, they did it to help.
Cuz they have a full caseload or, or caseload already.
Yeah.
Um, I did answer, I believe, in one of the emails, the date of this and whatever. IEPs are time-sensitive, date-sensitive, and so um I just wanted to bring that out in public comment that um we um, we have to, we have to do something cuz everything is time-sensitive and if they're not, that in fact impacts our special education count.
Is it thirty days after a referral? It has to be like a, you have to have a meeting or has to be written?
These are more for our annual reviews.
Okay.
Yes, there are dates for when a request goes in and so forth. There are timelines, but this particular person will be managing the renewals of ones that have dates from, so they had, they had three hundred and sixty-four days to do one before them.
Yeah. And there were, I wanna say twenty-seven remaining on our caseload. I couldn't tell you how many with the ones that the two teachers that filled in and helped did, but probably, I would say probably about eight, five, you know, six, eight of them. And then she'll be doing the remainder to finish out the year and then we'll be filling that position.
It's a very big gift to know how to do it and do them properly, legally, and it's not just something you just can sit down and write.
Yeah.
And then will she meet with, do the meetings as well?
Um, she, yeah, she will come in person or do them virtually depending on what her schedule, cuz she does do this work for some other districts as well.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the fourth consult, consultant service agreement of Kendra Hilbert. Uh, it's been moved and seconded, uh, Yoshimi? Noah? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Moving on to number five, the con, consultant service agreement for Craig Reynolds.
Delise and I will probably keg-team this. You know about my commitment to improving um not only operational processes and procedures, but making sure that we are meeting all of our requirements in a timely fashion, as well as the learning to allow Delise time to grow and learn and develop. Um, we had a consultant service agreement for Craig Reynolds, um, while we were hiring Delise and so forth. Um, we are starting what I call audit season, if you've ever, um, so there is, when you're doing an audit, you're answering last year's comments or questions that they made, so we have to answer that. Delise wasn't here, so that's part of it. The other part is there's a real learning and there's a status and our status quo or an operational way in which you work with auditors as well as the work that we have that we're doing on budgets. If you think about it, what we're asking a new employee like Delise is manage an audit, manage last year's audit findings, manage a new budget. We just finished a legislative session. We're committed to having something to you in May. And she needs to have confidence and support that the decisions she's making are made with confidence and someone just to help, to, to encourage and to support. And so that's what this is for. Delise, do you think you wanna add? Cuz of your, talking with Craig.
Yeah, um, you know, he has been doing this for so long. Um, and he's such a good resource and he's very gracious to come back. Um, he's loving his retired life and being in Utah all the time. Um, and I think we only asked for five days, um, and it wouldn't be on a consistent basis, it would be as needed when I need him. Um, and so I think especially with the audit, it would be very, very beneficial. Um, unfortunately, there are questions on the audit that I can't answer cuz I wasn't a part of those processes. Uh, but somebody who was here and was in, you know, the nitty-gritty, then can. Um, and I just appreciate him as a mentor and what he's taught me, what he continues to teach me. Um, but.
Is he doing it remotely then? Okay.
Yeah, he's coming in.
He's not living in Utah, he's just.
Likes being there.
Grandkids are there and.
Yeah, it's more.
I don't blame him.
Yes, exactly.
I, I think the other piece that anybody who's listening who may not understand all that he takes a lot of phone calls and a lot of things that he doesn't charge us for. So this is when he's physically here, deep down and doing the work, right? This is not that five-minute phone call when she says, hey, where's that at, right? That's not, that's kind of work. He's not part, sorry to my professional attorney friends out there, he's not talking the kind when we make the phone call. Sorry, Lisa.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
He's just been an amazing individual. If you're listening, Craig, you're doing an amazing work for us and we appreciate it.
We'll move to approve, approve the consultant service agreement for Craig Reynolds. Lisa beat you.
How fast can you be on the draw?
Uh, it's been moved and seconded, Yoshimi? Noah? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Moving on to number six, Mental Health Matters Grant and SAAAS Agreement.
Uh, so actually, one of our new teachers, um, who came here from the Mapten School District is the one that brought this to my attention, Maren Smith here at the high school. Um, it's a, it's a, it's a, 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 a program that she had used in her previous school. It has really two parts. It has the, uh, about, it has training for teachers, about, I don't have training on suicide prevention. Kind of Kimberly made reference to that. She actually contacted me about this because we know this is a, um, very important to her. Um, our teachers, our staff, we're talking about staff, not just teachers, will be doing this, everyone will do, all of our, um, folks that have uh contact with students, um, principals and everybody. It's hour and a half and it helps raise their awareness and understanding how to recognize the signs that a, a student might be feeling suicidal and obviously anyone could be a student or anybody in their life, um, with what they'll learn from this. In addition, it also does have, um, it has a lesson, a system for you, where you can go in and create lessons. Uh, for instance, um, Brian had email, emailed and asked about it, so an example might be um, Prosser High School's having some issues with freshmen at lunch, you know, maybe bullying behavior um at lunchtime. You can actually go in and um put in information like, you know, bullying. Uh, we put in the age range of the kids and maybe you wanna teach that Mustang periods, you have thirty minutes and the timeframe. And it will generate a lesson for you to help address that challenge that you could have your teachers um present, so. Um, and it can, any, anything around mental, mental health and those kinds of things, those kind of behavior things, the system can, can generate. Um, I've seen it, uh, seen it, I haven't used it yet, but it's really pretty interesting. Um, what it can do for you and um I really do think we have also this coming, this coming year uh, one of our legislative days that we get funded has to be a social emotional learning day. So we're, this will be part of that day that everyone will participate in and then I, in addition, we'll have additional time that our classified staff would, would be participating in the training, but I think it'll be really worthwhile. Um, you know, we have had students that unfortunately have taken their lives and we would never want that to happen. And if there's a ways that we can see, help see the signs, help the kids, then we need to do it.
A couple of questions.
Sure.
Trying to just wrap my head around, so this is a twelve thousand, little twelve thousand dollar program, it's an online platform, right?
It is.
Um, that has a, a two-pronged approach. Not only is it training for teachers, but it's also.
Right, they also can generate, we can also generate lessons if we, if we choose to use that. Um, so, um, you know, we have an adopted health curriculum, but it really is around mental health overall. So issues that you're dealing with in school, we're seeing lots of fights at lunchtime or or hallway behavior or the, and it, it is a, it is a pretty robust system. So it is, you know, our teachers are expected to use their adopted curriculum, um, but it has the capacity to help support. Uh, we do lessons already in Mustang period and um also at the middle school during their SWABED class. They're doing lessons like usually normally two times a week that come from, from another program. I know that I've heard a little bit at the high school, they're getting a little fatigue from that program. Kids are kinda, it's the same. It's a similar style, it's the same program that they see in middle school, but maybe some changes around if you're, you know, focusing on making healthy choices or something like that, cuz they do those kinds of things during Mustang period. Um, you know, setting goals, those kinds of things, so.
Does the, um, is it a, like a prescription, uh, not prescription, uh, um, what's the word, uh, subscription base?
Um, no, it, it, well, yes and no, I suppose. It is a, we're paying for the training, you know, for all of our staff, so it's how, as many staff as we want to train. And then for the access for, to the, to the platform for the lessons, so.
For eternity?
No, no, well, actually, that's a good question.
Does that see where it had a breakpoint or?
Yeah, it doesn't. I think we're paying for it and it's ours. So as new people come on, we can pay, we can have them train, they can come in and do the training as we hire new teachers. So as new people come on, we can pay, we can have them train, they can come in and do the training as we hire new teachers, our new classified staff, so.
And I'll make a note of that to make sure that I.
Yeah, my representative. Yeah, I, I believe it's ours.
Yeah, we're buying the, our lives.
Okay, yeah, so we have it for.
Yeah.
How often will the teachers have training? And then service day for training?
So the, the, the suicide prevention is one training for an out, like, so like an hour and a half training. Um, so I don't think there's different versions of it. So there's that, that training we would do for the, let the start of school.
Before school starts.
Yes, yeah. And I'm gonna use Title Four, um, our Title Four grant has three parts. One of the parts is, um, that you're sup- you're supposed to. Support with that grant is safe and healthy students. So we're gonna use some of our safe and healthy students.
Is it something that we can train every year?
Absolutely, yeah. Or, and you know, they're, they're, they're relatively new company and that's developing. Maybe they'll be developing some other types of mental health training for students as well.
Is this gonna replace what we currently have now?
We don't have anything for suicide prevention.
I think the piece here.
So yes, it's replacing nothing.
I think the piece that for us and, and for the students who are looking and so forth, this is our step in, um. Acknowledging it and understanding kind of what Kimberly talked about, but also about, um. As my experiences in twenty years in education, when something happens. Or someone reaches out to you, sometimes you plain old just don't know what to do. And at least it's a guide and a reference for us. Um, to know that it's okay to feel the way you feel when something's going on and to, to deal with that. I think the other part is that Deanna made a point of it, and I wanna talk about, it's about all staff. Right? So when we do it, it's the food service person, it's whatever now. How we, how we train all is going to be unique, but it's about all staff who are on contact. Right? Like, do we have a way to bring the coaches in? Do we have a, uh, athletic coaches? Club advisors, now our club advisors are often teachers, so it would be kind, but you see what I'm getting at. It's, it's all students, so that. They at least have the tool, the, or the. Piece to know where to go or get assistance or feel comfortable and ask.
Teachers see student writing all the time. Sometimes kids write things, you're like, oh. You know, some of those signs that you might see in a journal, or maybe in writing a paper or something like that.
Is there any other, I mean, programs that you guys have come across?
Not that I'm aware of. I'm sure there's other training we could find for suicide prevention. Um, but there's, uh, nothing that I'm aware of right now. We'd have to go look for it.
One of the thing, you know, I was trying to look up online, and there's not a, well, unless I'm not very good at the internet. But I, I couldn't find much, I could find a little.
I had a little bit of a hard time too, and like I said, they're relatively small, new company. And they're restructuring their website right now, actually. So, um, I had asked a lot of questions when I met with a representative. Because I too, I'm like, I can't really find, like, tell me more about this, because it was very hard to.
I had to go into their Facebook presence.
Yeah.
To get then to their page, to get in.
And it did have a different name before too.
Yes. Into their other platform.
So they're growing, but they're a pretty small, they're relatively small company that's developing, you know, the, their website. She said they're in a whole revamp of that, so I think it will be easy to see information. Um, the biggest thing for me was not so much about the lessons as it was about the training. That's why I met with her in the first place, it was about the training.
So, um, it, there's training for kids, probably.
Yes.
Is there lessons for all grades in suicide prevention?
So it's the, you could generate a lesson around that if you want. There isn't, it isn't a book where you go through and find, oh, kindergarten lesson, first grade lesson, second grade lesson. Um, there, there isn't lessons, it, it was something you could generate. Those kinds of lessons would be ones that we would probably put through a process of review. Um, before we, similar to what we've done with our health curriculum in the past.
Would it be, are we going to consider making it a requirement to start talking about? Mental health at an earlier age and suicide prevention at like the third grade?
So there's, there's standards around that, that talk about what's appropriate based on certain grade levels. Um, I, I don't think third grade would, would be the gr- a grade level where you would begin that conversation. But certainly around healthy habits, making good decisions, around, you know, happiness, how you feel, your feelings. Managing your feelings, those kinds of things are things that teachers talk to kids about every day, because kids are struggling to manage their feelings sometimes every day. Not even outside of just a lesson, like life skills, social skills, all of those things. Our teachers teach. You've probably seen teachers teach that, um, on the spot when somebody's struggling with that, so. Good question.
And what about education for students? This is just tailored to teachers.
The, the training is tailored to teachers, not particular to students. Um, but. The lessons would be what would maybe be something we would consider if we wanted to do, like we used to do natural helpers and some of those kinds of things. We haven't, we haven't explored that yet. That would be a bigger process.
I guess I'm gonna ask the question that we were side barring. Can you tell us the difference between the grant and the agreement?
So the grant, so there's a total cost, and the, they, we've received a grant for a portion of it. So, um, when they talk about the grant, it's the financial assistance that's so that you can implement it, so. Yeah, so it's a portion.
I think what it's saying, so just in case everybody, there's a date, we were talking about the date, there's a grant agreement for twenty-four to twenty-five. And so what that's saying is if there was additional charges, they're only agreeing that amount of money.
For, for next year. And then it would also be our opportunity if we choose to go, you know, if we decide it's not the, what's. Maybe there's something better or something different. We're not, we're not tied to it.
So do you mean, make sure I got this right? So it's, we're buying a, we're buying the, the software or the?
Yeah, the online access, yeah.
Forever.
No, well, I don't think we're buying it forever. They, the, we're paying for it for the year. We have the access. They're giving us the grant. This agreement for the grant is about one year. Um, we are paying for the access to the training and to the lesson platform.
For one, for one year, do we?
Well, I.
I, that's the que-.
I see why you have that question, cause I need, I'm gonna have to go back and ask her, cause honestly, we, it's, the agreement is for one year, but that's because the grant is one year.
It says duration of use July twenty twenty four to July twenty twenty.
I know, but this talks about the grant. I, I, I understand why you're confused, and I, I have abs- like, this is, we're not doing anything with it, we're not doing anything with this till the fall. So you guys absolutely can table it, and I will follow up with Ting and get you guys that information.
Could we, um, so our, the new hire from Mapten has been through the training.
She's kinda, uh, been doing, I think, kinda testing the system for her too. Yeah, Maren, yeah, I'm sure she would.
That'd be good.
Well, it's not table, let's postpone it.
Okay, I motion then that we, we postponed six Mental Health Matters Grant and.
He needed to say when.
Until the.
Can we get, you think she'd be able to be here to discuss that?
I, I don't know. Maren, I can't commit, but I'm sure she could probably at least be here virtually, but I will certainly ask her. I know I can get the information by then.
Okay.
And then if, and if Maren can't be here, I can have her write something up.
Good.
Until May twenty.
Uh huh, sure. Not till May.
You don't wanna waste that.
I don't make, is there a second?
I know, I, yeah, I can see why it's confusing.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to postpone the Mental Health Matters Grant and S A A S Agreement to the March twenty-seventh meeting. Uh, Yoshimi? Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, do you think we could also get, in addition to that, a? Like an example of, of the train, or the training, or the example of, of the training that they're getting?
Um, maybe like, um, like, right, like the overview, maybe, like the topics, like the agenda of it?
Yeah, like an outline?
Like, I'm, I think so. Unless it's proprietary, but even at that, I think I could get it and maybe just send it to you. I don't know if I can publish it.
Okay. Settle. Thank you. Uh, moving on to item number seven is RFQ zero 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 three dash twenty-four appraisal.
So just so you understand, this is, um, much like our RFQ from before. Um, falling toward, working hard to follow proper business policy and procedures. Um, if we are going to someday sell any of our property or ask for an appraised value of something that we are using. Or going to use as either a collateral item, or we need to know anything, we have to do this. And so this is just a re- um, request for qualifications, and just like we did for the project manager and the architect.
Do we know what properties we're gonna have them?
No, um, at this point, that would be a full board discussion that we would do as a person. This is just saying, okay, let's find someone that we can have on. You know, on, on retainer or on call, right? That when we need something, that we have them ready to go. Because I don't think if we don't do that full process, you can't just pick up the phone and say. I need your help, I need your services, because we have to make sure they're qualified and that you approve of them. And I don't wanna do that at the same meeting when you're discussing property or discussing something. So I just think it's a good business practice. And one thing I did learn through all of this, is like a lot of people were learning all the time, um, once we do that. They can be kind of ours forever, meaning you don't have to do one a year, you don't have to do one every five years. You can do that, and then, um, we can do kind of like a consultant agreement when we, that's what would be the next step. We'd have a consultant agreement, and it would have a date and a time, or a percentage of cost, or however it's done. And so once we've done the RQ, we have those, think of it like an application pool, right? So we have the applicants. Then we'll have a committee that will review the applicant, and then book them up. And then you'd have a consultant agreement that you would approve also.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, Eric is online for whenever you wanna go back to that.
Okay, we'll go back after this.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the RFQ zero 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 three dash twenty-four for appraisal.
Seconded. Been moved and seconded to approve RFQ zero 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 three dash twenty-four appraisal. Yoshimi? Noah? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We're going to go back. Uh, department reports for the migrant department. Eric, are you there?
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I apologize, um, had some family things going on, but, uh, three things I wanted to share with you. So positive thing that's happening right now with the MEP students, we have been helping Grandview Middle School. Uh, understand lunar phases, we're taking our planetarium over there, and our high school students are coming and helping present. That information to Grandview Middle School students, and it's turning out to be a great partnership. Something that we're working on right now, it's in bilingual, and that is, we're doing a comprehensive review of our program. I have a small team that I've been working with, and we've been doing some visits and. Having some conversations about our policies and procedures and how we do business, and then we'll be bringing that to you later. And a fun fact is that, um, students who. Experience biliteracy and dual language programs, actually, research has shown that it holds off dementia and Alzheimer's.
Thank you, Eric, I appreciate it. Thanks for coming.
Yeah, not a problem.
Thank you. To, uh, action item number eight is first reading of Policy Procedure forty-two thirteen, School District Firearms and Use of Force.
Well, I'm gonna tell you that, uh, this was a big undertaking, um, a big undertaking. When I look, and I, I have to also tell you, I am learning so much about this policy, that I don't even know. If I can tell you, I mean, it would take me hours to tell you all of this, but I'd like to take a look at forty-two thirteen. Just the, uh. The, the procedure is what we're looking at in the policy. So if you wanna go to your red line. It's probably the easiest one to look at. Um, on page one of seven, um, we were missing a board director in this group, so we added the board director word. Um, the big work was in page two of seven. I shared this with the discussion meeting before. That first paragraph, if you read it and really read it for grammar and whatever, it really just didn't make much sense. And so we, what we did here is retired or former law enforcement, military or security personnel are preferred candidates. For the position of school security officer. Law enforcement officers retired from service. That, um, possess a retired deputy sheriff, a retired police officer, identification card. From a law enforcement agency within Washington State shall be exempt from the concealed weapons permit. So they hold different status than somebody who's a lo- just left law enforcement. Okay? And that's different than somebody who's been a military officer, someone who's been like at Hanford. And so I just learned so much about this, that I just didn't think the paragraph was well, um. Didn't, verbiage didn't match, match what we were actually trying to accomplish. So that's that paragraph. Then there's really no other changes in this part of it, until you get to. Sorry for the thump. I think that, that was the main pieces in that, um. We're just trying to make sure that what we're doing in the building matches our, our procedures and policy. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's, that's it in a nutshell.
I think you might need to explain that. That's a, that's a state law. You're retired from law enforcement.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Yeah, it's not just.
Thank you so much. So, um, once again, I work in the world of education, not in the wor- world of law enforcement and concealed weapon. That's just not mine. So I've had to learn a lot about this. And so there's a called, uh, uh, Leosa card. I didn't even know there was such thing. It's kinda like the acronyms in education. There's lack, acronyms in law enforcement. And so, um. Because so many of our, our team are retired law enforcement, I just thought, everybody who had a Leosa card. Well, they don't. So you can work ten years in law enforcement and say, I'm not gonna be in law enforcement anymore, just like if you wanna be a teacher for ten years and leave. But you can still keep your teaching license, or you can still be in good standing, and then you have to get a concealed weapons permit. Uh, unlike somebody who's done twenty-five years in Benton County, then you get this Leosa card, and it has to be signed by the current sheriff. There's certain rules and regulations. Then if you, like the gentleman we just hired, um, is a lifetime Marine. And now he has different requirements, and so we had to make sure that our pol- procedures and policy matched that. I want everybody to hear, I started working on this before we hired the new person. The other thing is the new person has to meet certain qualifications of training, so on and so forth, before. He can carry in our school district. So it's not something, we don't, we're not circumventing, we aren't doing anything. But we gotta make sure that what we're asking people to do is in our policy, and that we're following those guidelines. I think that's my, in a nutshell, for that.
I think you've done a lot of work. I noticed that policy was first written in two thousand and thirteen, and a small amendment was made in two thousand and seventeen, and nothing since then. So thank you for updating that.
Well, and I want you to know, every, I met with the security, just so everybody's listening, I meet with the security officers every other Wednesday. And I have to tell you, those five gentlemen have taught me a lot, and they really are helping us making sure that. And, you know, they say it's not if, it's when, we're, that we're protected and we're following guidelines, and that we're safe and we're making good decisions.
Thank you. Any questions for?
All right, looks good.
I think it looks good. Make a motion to approve number eight, first reading. Procedure. Forty two thirteen, school district firearms and use of force.
Then moved in segment to approve the first reading of procedure forty two thirteen, school district firearms and use of force. Yoshimi? Noah? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Motion carried. Second read, moving on number nine, second reading of policy procedure, one 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 six, student representatives to the board.
We talked about this. This is its second reading. We did make a couple um, corrections. Um, Director Wyman asked, sent me an email and said um. About the two point seven five GPA that is recommended now, not required. We also made the adjustment that was requested of the code of conduct. For all of our clubs and and um, activities. So I think we captured them all, but before, you know, I wanna make sure that you've looked at it and especially our student board reps have looked at it. That it's what we talked about in our meeting and so forth. So um, I just want everybody to have their eyes on it because. This is something, remember, that is also important to me and it makes our onboarding. We have an onboarding policy now. We have. I mean, I'm doing them anyhow, but we have a policy now about how they meet with the superintendent and what they do, right? So there's some pieces there.
I had one question.
Okay.
So the second term thing, so does that mean I can be the?
Yes.
Without having to reapply?
I'm gonna have to say, um, I I wanna talk this through with you and everybody who's listening. Because the policy is going into effect now and you're going to be a senior, you would have to reapply. If someone who's a junior. Was applying, it would have packed them because they're a junior going to be a senior. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, so you just would fill out the form and turn it in.
And do I do the interview again too?
I think we would probably do that just to make sure that we're following protocols. And if anybody who's listening. Things and we want to a- adjust that for. Sure, something we can, but I don't. Putting the policy in effect and you're on the board now as a, out already as a junior, cause you would be applying through senior year. I think we would just go through the formality of that.
Okay, and then there's another thing, um. So it's now required that we attend all board meetings too. Was that, did I see that correctly?
Would be just like you do now. You ask to be excused, just like a board member does.
Okay, and then so if we do fail a class, um, so if with the athletic. Board of conduct or whatever, uh, if we fail a class, we can't like, I think we can't participate in that activity. For two.
There's a suspension process and then uh.
So would that count as an excuse?
Yeah.
Okay. And then I think that's it.
Those are great questions.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, I'll move to approve the second and final reading of policy and procedure one 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 six, student representative to the board of directors. We move in seconding. Yoshimi? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to item ten is the twenty four twenty five school calendar.
Well, Deanna and I are gonna do this one together.
So we had previously set the student calendar and remember Lisa being very excited about that.
So, so let me tell you how this started.
Couple little changes.
So let me tell you how this started and then how it morphed. So it started, we just started some data of how many staff and how many students are off on our half day Wednesday before Thanksgiving. And how many staff and students are off on the half day before Christmas. Then we looked at the cost of substitute and the viability of the curriculum on those two half days. At my request, I said, we can't afford the substitutes and the viability of the strength of the curriculum on the half days was not there. So I went and opened um, with, or Deanna and I together, went to our PEA, which is our our.
Biggest.
Biggest, I guess, would be union and said, what do you think of this? Well, if you remember, we are one of the few school districts that still go to school the week of Thanksgiving. And so they said, well, uh, we like that, but how about if we just take the whole week off at Thanksgiving?
So we, so so we proposed just eliminating the half day. So for example, the the Monday and Tuesday before Thanksgiving, we had. A little over two hundred kids gone both days. The day before Thanksgiving, oh, four hundred kids.
Yeah.
Was it that?
Five hundred and eighteen on the day.
So it's just, it's like if a quarter of our kids are gonna come to school, then.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
And so.
They've counter proposed.
So we'll start school on Tuesday, the twenty seventh. And the last day of school is Thursday. The other unique part about this is we put. So if you're a teacher or have been a teacher, the month from president till spring break is a long seven week. Everybody gets a little tired. So we moved a snow day into that seven weeks. So if we don't have to use it, they get a three day weekend in March. Um, just as a, I guess you call it, we talk about mental health, but mental health day. Now we need it as a snow day, that's it. There's one more piece that was important to me in this and Deanna and I both in this was that we did not end school on a Friday. And I'll tell you why, cause if you have to add another snow day. We could add Friday, so we'd have two in the middle of the year and one more before we have to move graduation. There's a state law that says you can't have graduation before five days of the last day of school. So if you go to the next Monday or Tuesday, you have to move the graduation. And people start planning and air tickets, airline tickets are bought and so forth. So we want, we have those two days. Plus we have that Friday. So we have three days of safety net per se without having to move graduation.
Barring a snowpocalypse.
Yeah, barring so far, but yeah.
Not done with.
Yeah, so that's that's the.
About every ten years, right?
That's about the story for the calendar change. We are also committed, we want, we told um, the PEA. That we are committed to looking at calendar options and trying within all reason. When you finish our next bargaining to preserve three calendars for three years.
Be nice.
So.
I think great.
One one less thing to, like it can be done and.
And yeah, it can be just off the plate and we could publish them and we could do that. So. That's all of this business pros- processes that we're working on.
Make a motion to approve twenty twenty four twenty five school calendar.
Been moved in segment, Yoshimi? Noah?
I doesn't affect me.
Hey, you'd get all week for Thanksgiving.
I get all week for everything next year.
Alright, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. Thank you. That's, I think that's great ideas on those half days, which are kind of a.
And I I think of our transportation crew. I think that there's just food service. There's just some real pieces that those half days are hard on.
We literally serve lunch at like ten o'clock. It's really brunch.
You serve breakfast and turn around and serve lunch thirty minutes later.
Pretty much.
Uh, moving on to a light, uh, action item eleven is vouchers and payroll. I I had one question, um. It kinda goes back from last meeting when you talked about the CBC, uh, CBC running start. Doing more of that in here, there is a voucher in. Uh, this year, or this month or weeks, um, I just lost it, where'd it go? It's like twenty grand or something like that. Is that right? Um, so one thing I. Cause I think it's such an exciting program, like and I can't remember, I couldn't remember. When a student is in running start and goes off of campus.
We pay a bigger chunk to them.
Versus what we get as their full time equivalent, right?
Right, so if they're here and they're taking, if they're if they're full time at running start, it's almost all of it. Almost all of it goes to CBC. If they take a college in the high school class here. Now, we don't even pay, we're not even, the state's paying all that tuition now. It's and and our teachers actually get a s- a stipend, a grading stipend from the college. So in the plan that I gave you guys last, last, at the last meeting, they will have to have thirty credits. So whether they're taking a class online or not, that that FTE is gonna go to CBC. But that's not the case for college and the high school. We're providing the teachers, we're teaching the course, so.
I thought we could do, that most.
There's some.
Could get the classes here. Except for.
Right, they have to have thirty and we can do, they're depending on what they choose to take, there's, there's about fifteen or twenty they could take here depending on their elective choices. There's more than that from CBC here, but it's the restricted, most of them are restricted, so it limits what they can take. So that still is, that's not tuition going to them. Yeah, so depending what a kid chooses to do, they could maybe only have to do two online.
We we might be able to. And I say might because it might take longer than what I'm initially envisioning, but we could compare our expenditures. Try one of twenty three, twenty four school year in the fall to. Expenditures in try one of twenty four, twenty five, and you'll be able to see that same.
And it's gonna take time. But I can tell you, six years ago, we had a hundred and twenty kids in running start.
Yeah, I remember it was.
Hundred and twenty kids and we have about sixty as our norm, but we were up to a hundred and twenty. We weren't offering any college in the high school or we had very little. And now we have thirty five courses right now, hoping to have closer to forty, depending on what gets approved and added and stuff. Rick's adding quite a few new ones through CTE and so it's pretty exciting. That would have been cool for me when I was in high school.
That's that's great. Thank you. And actually, it was forty thousand.
It was forty, yeah. That was, that's, I don't know how often we get to that, one month.
I switched to CBC this semester, my bad, no. No, but YVC, if you guys have any kids doing rain start, always go CBC, cause YVC rain start. Is not good, cause their representatives don't talk to our counselors that much, so always go CBC.
Yeah, the only advantage of YVC is it's closer.
That's that's why I did.
To go.
That's why I did, yeah.
Yeah.
But now you can do a lot of it here, except for the thirty or so that you have to go.
Probably already done.
So that's uh.
I've done a few college in the high school classes. I I personally like. Running start classes better because it, I can work at my own pace. So, yeah.
Great, thank you. Any other questions on voucher? Well, move to approve vouchers and payroll. Been moved and segmented to approve vouchers and payroll. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, motion carries. And moving on to our consent items. One through four.
May I speak?
Yes.
Um, I just want everybody who's in the audience and listening today, if you have not had a chance to uh, review the minute. Um, that's in the agenda item, all of the letters, comments and so forth that we have received. And I hate to use the word to date, I can say through Friday, last Friday. Yes, and so I just don't have been an added and any future letters or comments that we get will be added to the appropriate minutes. Um, and so I think it's important if somebody is trying to do it on their phone or a tablet and can't open that huge PDF, cause it's. Very long, but that they acknowledge that they are all there.
I had, I had one comment as well, um. I was, I was going through the thing and I was like, oh, cool, minutes. And I was like, this is one page, thirty four pages. And so just community involvement was skyrocketing, um. And if anyone was wondering, both of those bills are on the governor's desk now, so they will be signed in later this month.
Thank you. Any other questions? We'll move to approve, approve consent items one through four. Been moved and saying to approve items, that items one through four, Yoshimi? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, motion carries. That concludes the action items for tonight on to report.
Uh, there was one more, there was the volunteer coaches, was that?
That should have been a consent item. Am I wrong? Have a lot of pages on the. Elise, you're up first.
Um, we've been really busy over here in my little world of fiscal. Um, I got the opportunity to attend the Washington State K twelve annual user group conference this last week. Um, it was super beneficial. It was, it's put on by the company that owns Skyward. Um, so you get down in the nitty gritty of like reporting, um, in each section of the system, which I'm not familiar with everything. Um, and it helps me support my staff. Um, it helps um, them not have to put any, so many tickets into ESD. And to be able to solve issues themselves. Um, a lot of professional development also, um. And I learned a lot about myself as a leader and, you know, things that I can do different. Um, I also attended two budgeting workshops at the ESD, which were super beneficial. Um, I learned a lot of tips and tricks to better streamline our budget process, so. Twenty four, twenty five will be much smoother and cleaner. Um, we'll have it to you a lot sooner. Um, OSPI also, uh, the, I'm sorry, the legislator also adopted the state budget. So our OSPI budget tool is now updated. So after the three of us finish meeting with all of our buildings and directors, we'll start. Being able to get down and then send nitty gritty and get the dollar amounts and uh, be able to have that for you very soon. Um, my other report is January financials. Um, we're staying very status quo. We are still in a better place this month than we were in January of twenty twenty three. And that's even with the um, four hundred and fifty thousand dollar transfer to capital projects per our resolution that was. Um, passed last summer. So our general fund is still looking pretty good for this time of year.
I wanna just, once again, I keep talking about Delise, but the work that it takes to go in and learn something and be able to speak to it. Is um. Is amazing and to learn and to be able to present it in such a way. And she's a little bit humble when she says our January financials look pretty good considering, and I want everybody to hear. That we had a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar, right? Like, you know, I mean, we're, we're in a better spot. Than we would, could have probably hoped. Um, and uh. The, you know, we talked about it at one of our board meetings, but the Patterson bond pass, so. We will have that money coming in and the important thing to people to note is they're giving us five fifty and we borrow four fifty, so. A hundred to the good. Um, I just think Delise needs to be received that when you're young and learning something and. I don't mean young uh, chronologically or age wise, but young and learning something and. You really have to spend the time to understand it from the ground zero. So she needs to be commended for that work.
I've worked with several business managers. She's doing a great job.
After, she says that after thirty years of experience, right?
We'll just stop at thirty, it's a little hard.
Can I ask one thing? And I don't know, my agenda didn't have the Ja- January report. Did any of your guys? From last week? Did yours have it?
No, there's a, there's a link to it. I I just thought I grabbed it off the copier.
But like the link's not good?
Well, I didn't have the link in the original agenda. I had, I see it in this one, but not in the original. Can we make sure that that gets put back into the?
Yes.
Um, the board packet, if it's different there.
It is online. It's there online.
I have it on, so this is the original. I have it on the agenda.
I have it on the updated agenda, but I.
So we sent one out on Friday and they're saying that it wasn't there on the Friday.
Right.
Oh, no, it was not attached. The the actual report did not get attached on Friday.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it was not attached on Friday, cause she was in training, so it didn't get attached. Yeah, yeah, so she attached it afterwards. I'm sorry, I was confused. It's like, I'm looking at it, but yeah, on the original email.
Didn't miss something, cause I was like, man.
She was at the Wausau. She was at the Wozberg training, but didn't actually get attached.
Thank you.
We're, we're all like. Thank you though for clarifying, and we, we are committed to making sure we're.
Um, yeah.
Three things, um, gifted referral window is open through this Friday, so anybody has a, anybody out there that has a student they would like to refer for the gifted program. Um, that's all on our website, you can also reach out to my office and Marcy Mercer can help you with that. There's two events coming up, I know you got an invitation to the avid family night, it's not till the end of May, but we know how busy. That time of the year is, so Wednesday, May twenty-ninth, um, Casey, Casey Carthouse or Blair Saint Union invite for seven o'clock here at the high school. For our avid night, and then, um, we have our, we're. River View's done a lot of the work, Jesse's people have done a lot of work, we're doing our own early learning night on March twenty-sixth at five thirty at Keener Review. Um, we are put together our own packets, we put together our own lessons, honestly. River View has done it, Jesse's building has done it, so I wanted to make sure we give them the credit, I gave them money, they did the work. Um, so that early learning night, the twenty-sixth from five thirty-seven, so feel free to come.
I'm gonna add, have you tell about the amazing work we're seeing already in kindergarten registration?
So actually, we have two things going on, we have kindergarten registration and so ironic, so one, one kind of story there was. There was like six kids already for kinder- registered for kindergarten by seven in the morning the first day we had it open. And, um, one of the moms said, well, I didn't get into TK, so I wanted to make sure I got in, it's like, if you're going registering for kindergarten, everybody's getting into kindergarten. Um, we also have our early learning interest form out there, and we have fifty. Two or fifty-seven kids, right, in the fifties registered for kindergarten last year, they just dribbled in, it was like. Oh my god, are we gonna have fifteen kindergartners, it was really slow, so it's, that's um, accelerated for whatever reason, maybe we've done a better job advertising, a better job. I know Parent Square and the messaging is, is easier for us now with that system. And then the early learning survey had fifty-seven, we just opened that on Monday, had fifty-seven already in it as of Monday. Or as of today, so, um, there's a lot of people out there that are appreciating what we're doing and want their kids to come, so. If you have your, if you need to register your child for kindergarten, get him registered. Um, I think our regular registration's open for re-registering for the year too, so if you're a fifth grader and you need to redo your registration, you can do that as well. I also know, um, our middle school kids, there's a, uh, one vaccine, our nurses are working on getting the. Caravan here so that they could, families could just come here and get their vaccine, they're trying to get that, right, that last. Week of school where we're doing transition activities and stuff, so we have a lot of people doing a lot of really good things.
Any questions for Deanna?
You know me, I like to send a piece of paper because I don't wanna talk everything that I have to talk through, um. Volunteering and the stuff in the public, getting the word out about the capital levy committee and a tennis committee. So one of our commitments to the capital levy project was saying that our, that's a community will be able to. Make sure we're being good stewards of money, do what we say, so we're. Um, welcoming it to people who would like to sit on the capital levy committee, um, once we hire a project manager. Um, what's called an owners group. And, um, our architects, then we'll talk about the monies, where they're gonna be going, how we'll use them, how we prioritize. Um, so if you're interested in that, it's on the website and so forth, and you can reach out to me. We, it'll, think of it kind of like this, the capital levy committee would work like this and we'd have tennis underneath that. So we'd hope that someone from the tennis committee would sit on the full committee, but then we'll have a tennis committee also. Um, we have three different people reached out for the tennis and one for the capital committee, so if anybody else is interested, please let me know. I attended the Crystal Apple Award Celebration E S D one twenty-three, I have to tell you. Um, you know, I, I'm a, I don't mind public speaking and do whatever, but I spoke, or I was one of seven people. Who spoke at the, um, one of seven super, it's the basketball celebration. It's going on. So, I have to tell you, it was quite, um. An honor or felt good, seven superintendents talking about their amazing teachers, right, and we're doing whatever. And to really stand amongst your peers and hear about our amazing staff when you're with the others was, was a really good feeling. The other thing you need to be aware of is Davina Pink. Was a student here at Prosser High School, was also a teacher of the year from a different school district. So. Um, she is in the Pasco School District. And she's at one of the elementary schools.
Marvin Ward, Davina Ward.
Okay.
Yeah.
Her, her maiden name was.
Ward.
So anyhow, I just think it's quite interesting when you go to something like that, um, and so. The other thing that people don't understand, we don't always talk about it, but I think Wendy would be humbled. Each of the winners got a thousand dollars and they got. All kinds of treats and gifts and, I mean, they kind of walked out with the loot. And walked out with the loot, so, um, I just think that's important to note. I'm happy to say, just like last time I did this, we have no outstanding legal issues, that's cool. Communicating, um, I did send out a spot staff light. We're looking for more nominations, is it, you're kind of around Stan, you're needing people to continue to send people, um, nominations in. The attendance competition's been talked about, um, we're talking, meeting with staff individually, one on one, and how to manage personal time off, sick, vacation. Um, how do we get the word out about our open positions? Um, about through social media, we found that our levy was successful through using different social media, how do we get our open positions out? The good old article in the newspaper, the little help wanted out is not how we work in this century, so. You know, what do we do and how do we get it out there, so if anybody's listening or has any ideas, we're gonna try. You know, I think we're gonna look at indeed, we're gonna look at some other pieces, getting outside the, the traditional school means. Um. We have our first P E A and P S D negotiation meeting the week, the last week in March, oh, I know, second capitalized March. Last week of March, um, this first meeting is kind of setting the tone, making sure we know, setting our next meetings. Um, just some well, kind of rules of operation of how we're gonna negotiate. Um, I'm on vacation next week. Um, our summer work under facilities, you're hard to believe that it's March and first of spring has, or. First day of spring isn't hit, we're already talking about what we're planning for summer. Um, we're still working on the quotes for the trees at Wit Strand and some trees at the middle school. Uh, we have two of the three quotes for the roof of the old P H S, I have to thank Andy if you're listening, um. We have saved a lot of money because. If you think about a building that's been around that long, and first we had satellites to do. Internet, right, and then we had satellite TV and all that got piled on the roof. Well, whoever's gonna redo the roof has to take all that stuff off, well, if they unhook it or do whatever, they're gonna put it back right where it was. So Andy and his crew has gone up there and removed the conduit, removed the old satellites and took all the stuff off. So that we only have up there what we have to have up there, so that was really good for us, it was saving us some money, um. I was really excited, we met with Crystal and Michael today on their budget. And one thing that I thought it was really fascinating was. Think we need to talk about painting our building and branding our signage and what is our building look, so that. Pride, uh, talking about their building, I thought that was quite fascinating. Safety and security, um, our, we figured all of our signs for exterior of our buildings, they're getting ready to be ordered. Now we're working on like, what does that look like, how does it look friendly on the track and on our baseball fields, like. If you take your dog, please clean that buffet, here's a little green bag, right, if you're. Um, and how do we ask politely to our community members that when school is in session, we really can't have. You on our property because, or, we can't have P E class going on and. A community member on the track at the same time, it's just not safe, so how do we publicly and respectfully smile and say that? Without saying strout drug, you know, cause we don't want it to be like that, so that's what we're working on. Um, our A W S P, that's our Washington State Principals Association, we have session five on Monday, the twenty-fifth. Lots of training going on, police, we've talked plenty about that. We have a strong commitment to our budget prep work, we are on it. We even did our second session for the middle school, cause we didn't get it all covered today, so we are really listening to them. And the R F Q for what we've talked about has already started and we're ready for our next steps, so, there you go.
I think, any questions?
Yep.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to board reports. Brian.
Uh, I would say thank you again to Classified Personnel District for all that they do. Keep that things going on a daily basis, um, since our last board meeting, I met with Rick. Just to kinda get a better idea of what all goes on with, uh, the C T E program, which. Uh, some of you I'm sure fully aware of, there, there's a lot that that group does, um, they've been doing some really. Really good work, um, great group of kids and a, a great staff, so look, looking forward to catching. Backup with him, I think once, uh, once things are going in the greenhouse, just to see how that all turned out. Um, congratulations, girls, boys, basketball, um. Pretty good week, uh, in the Sun Dome for sure, that was, uh. It's fun to watch, even better if you can watch it on your couch now, so. It's good. Um, and yeah, hoping you guys have a great, uh, celebration with the levy committee on Friday.
Lisa?
A couple things, I would love if we did, um, how the math team come and do, I, I don't know what they do at a contest. Do a little, a little math team demo, maybe a work session. I'm sure I will learn something, maybe they can talk about fractions. What day was the eighth grade club fair that day that?
Um, we were talking May first.
May, May thirty first.
Yeah, we're doing it later in the year because we want, we want those clubs to stay in those eighth years minds. So, we talked about having it the same day as our high school club fair, which is in April, but it's. It's like a conference day, which is kinda strange, I don't know, I talked to, uh, Mr. Gregil and I talked to Ms. Schroder about it, so, but we're doing thirty-first.
You'll be talked about National History Day. I'm.
They're coming.
They're, oh, they're gonna come do.
Yeah.
Wonderful. We had a big group of middle school kids. Do well at regionals and our high school kids, and the high school kids, that's not a class, they do that. Completely on their own time, fun, and did so well, and that's all, you know, Dean and Kyla Smith and the time they put into that program is amazing. Uh, my last comment went, um, next Tuesday at one o'clock is the groundbreaking for our new boys and girls clubs in the old C T E building.
Yeah, I'm not going to be there, and so Brian, Ace, and Deanna and I, everybody was super, super excited. Anyone who didn't see, one of the portables went bye-bye down the street.
It was on, it was on Facebook.
Yeah, 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 go Facebook, but yes, thank you for bringing that up, two of those things. Yeah, that I missed, that was on my report, good job.
Great, thank you, yeah, it was, um. You know, to see as many kids that they took to, you know, the, I guess it was the regional results, taking forty-two middle schoolers. You know, a few high schoolers and then being able to continue to go on to Lake Washington and. Great opportunity for these kids and, and they've done it. In consecutive years, so it's a great program, so. Kudos to Kyla and Dean Smith for, for all of that. Um, the only other thing I was gonna mention is, you know, well, as we finished the track. Well, last, no, last fall, we talked about having a naming committee and we kind of set. Some of that to, you know, where we can name some of our facilities, I think, um. Before it gets too far in, into the future, it'd be nice to kinda start that, get a naming committee and hopefully we can name. You know, the new track, you know, since it's, you know, it's, it's a nice facility, it's a nice track, and a good opportunity for the kids, so.
I did, I did, I had one more thing, um, I forgot about it, but a teacher had mentioned it today, um. The school calendar, they were wondering if, um, you had looked into ending trimesters on Fridays, um.
So if you look at trimester one. It has sixty-one days, so that it ends on a Friday for Thanksgiving. Because if we made it sixty, it was gonna end on the Thursday, and then you'd have one day in your new trimester and then you'd have a big break. The other one, um, would have to have been moved three days, I believe, and that was a little too much. To take out of trimester three. So we do look at it, we try to use a little bit of common sense, one day in one way or another is one thing, three days is quite a bit of mistin- of. Instruction. So yes, we did trimester one's ends on a Friday, but trimester two.
Perfect, uh, and then I also just wanted to say, I forgot about this, but, uh, the first day of Ramadan was on Monday, so, uh. Welcome to, uh, I don't know how to say it in Arabic, but, uh, enjoy your month.
Good, thank you. Um, any other comments? Hearing none, uh, future meetings will have a safety meeting, March twentieth. Uh, right here, no, in room two oh five at five P M, and then a study session the same night. Uh, right here at six P M, this meeting's adjourned, thank you.